A hush came over the crowd. We received you.
I'd like to call the maid of your order, would you join me for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go into item two, introduction, presentations, and proclamations.
Excuse me, do you want roll call?
Uh, do we really need a roll call? We know everybody's here.
No, everybody's here.
Oh my.
It's the same as before. Councilmember Kelly?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Bess?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mayor Croft?
Here. Let's go on now to introduction, presentations, and proclamations. And a report of the Chino Valley Equestrian Association regarding the status of the Chino Valley Equestrian Park located on town property. Who is going to, yes, speak to us? Give us your name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for your continued support for us, and we'd like to give you another presentation of what we've done this year. So hopefully tops last year.
Alright.
And Cooper Anderson is going to be pretty much giving the presentation, and then afterwards we can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. We'll have a slideshow here to accompany your handout there as well, so everyone can see what we're looking at. Uh, where did it go? Oh, it's on the left, left of that arrow. PDF, right above it. It's that one. Yep, excellent. And you can... Oh, it will? Oh, there we go. Hey, I got control, great. So, this year's been a really, really busy year for us out in the equestrian park, and we're excited to report a lot of growth, changes, and participation. This year was really about partnerships. We really spent a lot of our energy building some relationships with other organizations in the area, and not only building the relationships, but then incorporating them into our organization as well. So, the theme of our year really was partnerships and community, okay? So, obviously that slide was simply about our theme. Some of the affiliates I want to talk about. So, this year started out, actually started out late last year, and then rolled into early this year. We had a lady move to the area by the name of Helen, who came to us with a great idea to do a saddle series, a Jim Connor saddle series. And she is the one who kind of launched our whole affiliate program. Helen, who's sitting right here in the crowd, kind of spearheaded this for us. She started a series, she did five Jim Connor buckle series. That then led to, saddle series actually, yeah. That led to the CVP Outlaws, which is a shooting, or a mounted shooting organization. Granite Mountain was already somewhat on board with us, but we firmed up that relationship. We also developed a relationship with Yavapai County Fair, and they actually did a couple series out there before their finals were held at the fairgrounds late in the year. We also developed a relationship with First National Bank to be one of our corporate sponsors, so we're working on a long-term relationship with them. And Laser, and if anyone knows what Laser is, they're the large animal relocation program in case of fire. So, we've developed a program with them to be one of their relocation facilities. So, really, we spent a huge amount of time nurturing these relationships, developing long-term partnerships and goals with all of them. And we're really excited about it, and we're actually in talks with a number of other organizations to have them out at our facility as well. Some of these organizations use our facility on a weekly basis, some on a semi-regular basis, and some on a very regular basis. It just kind of depends what their needs are. A lot of them use the arena for practice, like the Granite Mountain Riders use it for their drill team practice, that sort of thing. Go to the next one. And really, the backbone of all of this, and what was driving all of those relationships, it really is all about our volunteers. You know, that number looks really big at the bottom there. Four thousand three hundred and eighty-seven volunteer hours year-to-date. We compiled these numbers in November. Danielle and I sat down, and we keep track of all our volunteer hours. We have, everyone signs in, gives us their hours. These numbers are actually a little bit low, because we haven't finished compiling everything. A lot of time, a lot of time has been spent improving the grounds, running the shows, partnering up with all the organizations we're working with, and networking in the community, fundraising, just a huge number of things that we have going on. And, you know, we're really thankful. We actually have a couple of our board members out here. We have Gary, Daniel, Helen, and John Frank over here. All these folks here are on our board member, and they single-handedly put in a huge chunk of those hours that are up there. Huge amount of time. And we're really grateful and thankful for what they do. We were able to purchase some equipment this year, so if you ever get a chance to get out there, you'll see a lot of equipment locked up in that arena now, much more than ever used to be out there. We started a fundraiser earlier this year. An anonymous donor came to us and said, "Y'all need a tractor." And we're like, "Yes, we do." So, they stepped up, they donated the first seven thousand dollars to us, and then we did a matching campaign. We are about two-thirds paid off on our tractor. The finance company, John Deere, was able to finance for us, and we have quite a bit of funds sitting there to pay it off as soon as we have enough to finish it up. So, we're really thankful of them, and then Ardio also donated some of the implements to go along with the tractor as well. So, we're really, really grateful for those people who have stepped up and helped make that possible. The water trailer, which if any of you drag arena regularly out here, understand the need for that. That was finished up early part of the year, so we're actually able to water that arena and keep the dust down. That potato dust is pretty rough stuff sometimes. We are also able to purchase a race timer, so now we can officially have official results, computerized results, that we can then post immediately for all of our races, and the computer system to go along with that. These were big, big equipment purchases for us. A lot of money was involved in this, so a little bit of in-kind was brought to the table, but most of it by many of the folks you see here. We just went out and beat the streets, raised the money that we needed. So, that leads to all the improvements. So, again, if you haven't made a chance to get out there, we encourage you to do so. We've done a lot to those grounds. As you know, that arena, a number of years ago, was pretty rough. The ground is pretty rough out there. It's hard to race a horse in that old dust. And I think Danielle can attest to how tough it was at first, getting people to come participate. So, really, that arena's been key and crucial to our development. This year alone, we've added another three hundred and ten tons of arena sand, and it ain't cheap. It is expensive stuff. And we're really thankful to Prescott Dirt and a number of other companies who've stepped up and given us some stuff at cost, delivered it for free, a number of things like that. Still costs a lot of money to bring it in, but we're really, really grateful, because without that foundation, we're nothing. We really are. We were able to build a crow's nest this year, and we're super excited about that. We actually have an official crow's nest. This is where we do our registration, our announcing from, all that sort of stuff. Fastenal, Lowe's, who else was it, Danielle?
Brad Miller.
Brad Miller. So, we had a number of, and Legacy Roofing did the roof for us. This was all done for free. So, everyone came out and pitched in, donated the materials and the labor for free for us, and we're very, very grateful. There's going to be some plaques on the building itself at some point that's going to call out all those folks who helped make it happen. We recently acquired some arena lights, which we'll be applying to the city very soon to be able to put up. So, that's coming this next year as well. We have the lights, now we just need to get them mounted. When we had the, when we hosted the Yavapai Fair, they had to bring in portable lights. Noisy, stinks, you know, so for us it became a real, a real push. So, we actually had someone step up and purchase some lights and donate to us when we put the call out. So, again, it's about making those callouts and asking our members to step up for us. The day stalls that you'll see listed there, those are part of the laser program. So, they're bringing in all of the rail piping to put up the day stalls. The understanding is, we can use it. It's part of our fundraising, so we charge when people want to use it to put their horse up during the day when they're using maybe a second horse or a third horse. Allows us to raise more money, and allows them to utilize the facility if they need to in an emergency. We have expanded our obstacle course. I don't know if anyone follows current trends, but obstacle courses are really, really popular right now. We want to eventually partner up. There's a couple buckle series here in the area that we want to partner up with. So, in order to do that, we've got to step up our game. So, we've started expanding that, and we're going to continue expanding that. In addition to that, Gary Gang, who is part of the driving club, is going to be developing a driving course on the bottom half of the property as well. That's part of what we're doing this next year, so a lot more courses coming up rather than just enclosed arenas. And then obviously our grounds. You know, we continue to improve those grounds. We've installed some new tie rails. We've put up some small sheds for some tools, so we can store things away. We continue to, just cleaning up the tumbleweeds on a weekly basis is a lot of work. So, the grounds require a lot of maintenance and a lot of work, and we continue to work on that.
And our trees are growing.
And the trees. If you haven't seen the trees, they're looking amazing. They're looking... Already you can get your horse under there and you can get some shade. So, by this next year, they're going to start looking really, really good out there. And that has been, the trees have really have been just one of our members, Sharon. She's single-handedly has done all of that, and she waters them all week. She comes out, checks on them. Really dedicated in what she's doing. Membership, you know what? We keep growing. We're getting big, and we're excited about it. Two thousand seventeen, after a couple of years of working hard with the city and coming to some understandings and some agreements, CVEA was launched, CVEP then followed it. The first year, we had a hundred and forty-four members. That is thanks to this lady right here. Danielle being one of our founding members. We've seen amazing growth since then. Amazing growth. Two hundred year number two, and two hundred and seventy-five for year number three. A lot of our growth this year was due to our affiliations. So, we look forward to more of those affiliates bringing even more members into the organization. There's several ways membership works. Most of these folks simply come out on a, one time a week, one time a month, use the facilities during our open riding sessions where we set up all the poles and the barrels, and we have people out there to monitor and make sure that everything's good. But that gives them a place to actually go practice the sports that they love, you know, if they don't have an arena at home, because arenas are expensive. So, that's really what drives our membership in a huge part, is the availability of that arena on a weekly basis for them to use. And we're grateful for them. You know, where the rubber hits the road, it all takes money, takes a lot of money. Keep in mind, these numbers, a couple things. These numbers are not final. Again, these were finalized as of November, so these are going to fluctuate slightly when we get our final accounting in January, but these are pretty darn accurate to this point. Sponsorships. What sponsorships mean is, someone has actually purchased advertising or somehow have their mark on the facility via banner, via in-kind donations, that sort of thing. Donations itself is materials, money, labor. We consider all that to be donations. And listed below there are all the organizations that have come through this year to help us grow. Really, really, a lot of people stepped up. And again, it's thanks to, in huge part, Helen here, who is in charge of our fundraising, really getting out there and beating the pavement hard. She talks it up all the time. What's important to remember, these numbers do not include fees. These don't include anything to do with events. These are just hard numbers that we're out raising without anything attached to it. So, a lot more money came in via fees, via ground fees, via stall fees, those sort of things. We don't count that in donations and sponsorships. That's just part of our operating budget. Again, we're all about the community this year, and this just kind of attests to what impact we've had on the community as we've tried to impact the community ourselves. We've launched a new website. It's a hundred percent interactive website. All of our, we've had someone donate all her time and energy in developing a dynamic new website, which we can update instantaneously. All of our membership forms are going to be uploaded, so people can join digitally now. They can now enter all of our events digitally. So, everything's going to be really, really simple for all of our members. That said, Facebook, we all know everyone uses it, so we jumped on the bandwagon too finally. Huge part of our engagement has come through Facebook. We've had huge, huge, huge increases in our engagement there, and we're really happy about that. Some of the things we've done for the community is listed here. We hosted one of the chamber mixers. We had a lot of fun. We had our Granite Mountain Drill Team out there doing some drills. We had mounted shooters doing some shooting. Everyone had a great time. It was a potluck theme. We plan on doing it again this year at least once, if not twice. We really, really enjoyed it. And it also led to some relationships that we've developed. The main one being First National Bank. She was so impressed by what we've done out there that she came up to us and said, "I want to be a part of what's going on here." So, we were happy about that. Wine Bites and Brews, we love doing. We always have a lot of fun there, so we hope to do that again this year as well. Prescott Frontier Days Rodeo. We plan on being at the rodeo again. I don't know if y'all know, but we host the bars one night during the rodeo. And we were given the privilege of having the premiere night this year, because we have done such a fantastic job in the past, that they wanted us to have the premiere Saturday night. We did it, and we broke the record in amount of money raised via tips, so we are very, very happy. We get to keep the tips, so that's why we are happy. So, we're hopeful we'll get the premiere night again this next year, raise some more money. I believe we raised almost two thousand dollars on that event alone, just on the tips. Yeah, it was amazing. We do hope to participate in some of the parades coming up this year, the Fourth of July and some of those. But that's all kind of still in the works as well. The last three events, the tax sale, the Christmas bazaar, and the trick and treats. These are ways that we reach out to the community to start creating some, what do we call them? Not garage sales, but...
Swap meet.
Like a swap meet, yeah. So, specific to what we do, specific to equine activities. But the last one went so well that we're going to grow that this year as well, so that'll be something else we do. Our Christmas bazaar will be, we had to cancel it this year due to that nasty weather we had, but next year, we're going to launch it off even bigger. I think we had, how many vendors did we have? Thirty?
We had about thirty signed up.
Thirty vendors signed up. So, the first one went so well that we had thirty want to come out and do the second one. Oakwood has been a really big partner of ours. They've done a lot for us, so we participated in their trick and treat and helped pass out candy to the kids. So, another way that we're trying to get out there and participate in the community, as much as we're asking the community to participate with us. You know, for those of you who are here in the beginning, it was rough out there. I've spoke to it before. And to see something like this posted on our Facebook page was amazing. It was amazing. So, you know, we had a rough reputation, you know? People didn't want to run on that dirt. They really didn't. People want to run on our dirt now. Our next jackpot series, it's going to be even bigger. So, our first series brought a fair amount of folks out, but the reputation was so good and people bragged about it so much that I know our next jackpot series is going to be pretty darn big. We raised money to put two thousand dollars added cash, and cash always talks. The racers came out. It was great. So, we hope this year to have a repeat like that. But these are the responses we're getting, very, very typically, on all of our events, and we're really thrilled about that. This is how, this is how we utilize social media, you know, spread the word. This is how we do it. These are a list of the events we had, so a quick rundown. I know I'm running out of time. I'm taking all your evening. That three CVP Speed should be saddle series, and it was actually five in that series. I, my big old fingers mistyped there. There was actually five in that saddle series, Jim Connor. A lot of young folks. We had a lot of young folks doing their first barrel race, so we are really excited about that. So, we're really trying to integrate a lot of the young people into our sport. And that's how you do it. Get them out there and show them how to do it, get them practicing. We did two of our own barrel run jackpots, which did really, really well. Three mounted shooter shootout series. They utilized our facility for practice, then they also did their series. And they brought folks up from the valley. So, their goal is to bring more and more riders up from the valley. And we continue, we're going to continue doing that this next year as well. They did a clinic, so if you ever, watch our Facebook, guys. If you see a clinic coming up for the shooting this next year, come out and check it out. It's a lot of fun. We'll actually get you out on the grounds, shoot a gun. Off the horse if you want to even. It's a lot of fun. We did two all-breed horse shows. We had our best horse show ever this fall. It was our most well-attended, and it raised more funds than any other show we've ever done before. It went really, really well. We were really pleased with it. We kind of dialed in a little tighter this year, and made it very focused, and I think that really paid off. We did the three county Jim Connors. We had a Goddard open horse show, if anyone knows who she is. She's very well-known. The Back Country did two clinics. GMR stands for Granite Mountain Riders. They're our drill team. And then obviously our open riding. And our open riding is our bi-weekly event where you're welcome to bring your horse out and practice all you want. That leads to that bottom number, which is the most impressive of all, and that is a total of one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine horses in that facility this year alone. Sixteen hundred and seventeen riders. Obviously, a lot of people bring more than one horse. So, boots on the ground, that's really what it boils down to. You know, all this work is going down to that number right there, boots on the ground and use of the facility and the grounds. And that's what we're most thrilled about. Twenty twenty and beyond. In closing, you know, our goal this next year is threefold. We really want to start focusing on education. We really want to start focusing on the young folks, getting them out here, bringing in some more clinics for different disciplines. Reason for that is, it's going to also help us with some funding. You know, the best way to get grants and whatnot is education. So, we've really dialed in our focus, and by diversification, we're really talking about disciplines. We're really talking about disciplines. So, Gary's developing his driving range, his driving course. We want to bring a lot more drivers in, the mounted shooters. Showed us that there's a whole segment of riders that we really have not tapped into yet, that we can, that'll continue to drive our growth going forward beyond twenty twenty. And funding. You know, funding's a big thing. Up to this point, it's been grassroots. So, we've just been out in the ground, beating the pavement. This year, we're going to be looking much more towards corporate funding. So, we've begun a solicitation program. We're going to start bringing in some big sponsors to really start getting some bigger cash. We have a vision board in the office that we meet in every month, and part of that is our next arena. So, in order to do that, we've got to raise a lot of money. So, the only way to do that is to go after those corporate sponsorships. So, that is really our goal and our drive moving forward. That's all I have.
Questions?
I'll wait till Councilmember Turner goes. I have something.
Questions aside?
How'd you know I was going?
Because I saw you reach for your microphone.
Gave it away, huh?
Yeah, telltale.
I don't really have any questions. I would just like to congratulate all of the people that have been part of this. I know it's been something that was a long time coming. You were given the opportunity, and I think you've shined. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I was out at one of your shooting presentations where they're killing balloons the other day. It is really neat.
That's very entertaining, isn't it?
It is entertaining. I stayed through almost the whole thing. It is fun. So, you guys are doing well.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I go now?
Yeah.
Can I have a microphone?
She's coming for you.
We're in trouble now.
I'm going to step out of the way, because I know where she's going.
Well, you can come on up, come on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So...
Danielle, come on.
See, when you stand up there, you have to address the council. Okay, so here, we get to see everybody. I was just informed tonight, and other people, apparently word spreads quickly, right? That Danielle is moving to a different state. Which we don't say. No, she's moving for good reasons, and passing the torch down, and I just wanted to say thank you. It was five years ago? Six? We were sitting in this room, plastic tables and chairs, and just talking about the concept of this. It wasn't anything that it is today, and...
It was a tumbleweed park at that point.
It was, I looked at it, honestly, I looked at it like, huh, this is a pipe dream. And you made it a reality, and I know it takes a lot of volunteers, but I wanted to say personally thank you and offer up you a few words to talk to your community and pass on the torch officially.
Well, it's been a long road, but it's been a very passionate road. I have very mixed emotions about leaving. I'm leaving for my family, have a new grandson, so that kind of changed our lives. But this has been my baby, and so I'm leaving one baby, and leaving it in good hands. But it's been a lot of work, been very, I can't even think of the word, gratifying, because it is becoming something. And there's a lot of people that ride their horses out there, and there's still a lot of people that don't know we exist, but we're going to make that change, so everybody knows we're here. And we've got a lot of participation from down in the valley, and from Cottonwood and different areas. And that was my main goal, is to get people to come to us, rather than everybody here going to other areas to ride, whatever their discipline is. So, we're on our way, and it takes the village to make it happen, so I hope the village continues. And Cooper Anderson is going to be our next president, and I'm passing the torch to somebody very qualified and in good hands.
The only thing I'm going to say is, is this lady, and I just want everyone to understand, she has single-handedly done probably seventy percent of the work out there. This lady is out there day in, day out, so those are some, well, those aren't boots, but those are some big shoes, and I don't know if I can fill those completely, but I'm looking forward to the challenge. I'm looking forward to the next phase of the growth for the park. It's going to be a lot of fun.
Danielle, Danielle, I just, I personally just want to thank you too. I was in discussions with you from the very beginning, and you've done a great job, so, yeah. Thank you for everything you've done for our community. It's been outstanding.
Good luck, Danielle, to you and your family. Okay, I think we've got some strange character out here on B. Presentation by Mark Duane, Chino Valley Repertory Theater regarding the organization's upcoming first presentation. Where is Mark? Well, my gosh, look here. Come on up, Mark.
Like the bank mazies in town for the cigar. I understand I'm not allowed to smoke. First of all, I would like to express my thank yous to the mayor and council and staff for the confidence they placed in placing a great historical figure in the humorist of some intent after a presentation for horses. I appreciate that. Wonderful organization, though, thank you. Good evening, citizens of Chino Valley, mayor, council. It is an honor and a surprise to be with you this fine evening, particularly as I have been dead for nearly two hundred years, and I will continue to be dead. My dear friends, I thought of this today as I was sitting at Insurgent Brewery, how solemn and beautiful is the thought that the earliest pioneers of civilization was never the railroad, never the newspaper, never the missionary, but whiskey. However, truth, truth, is our most valuable commodity. So, let us economize in its use. I want to thank you for inviting me to tonight's services. I nearly missed the events. I came by Mr. Perkins Railroad and tired old train that needed to stop nearly every few miles to rest for three-quarters of an hour before we could get our way here to the beautiful Valley of Chino. One of the fellow passengers even was so bold as to suggest to the conductor that perhaps we should disattach the cow catcher at the front and attach it to the caboose at the rear as that was going, uh, there was no way we're going to catch any cows. And, uh, if it were on the back, it would make it easier for them to walk onto the train. So there was absolutely nothing to prevent them from going on that train. But, uh, I'm here on behalf of, uh, Chino Valley Repertory and its production, uh, Keep the Home Fires Burning. Uh, the director, Mr. Frohawk, and his cast of merry makers asked me to personally invite everyone to come and see the production this Saturday, the fourteenth, at two and four P M. Tickets are still available. Contact the Chamber of Commerce, uh, their website, whatever the Dickens that is. And at the library, I'm familiar with libraries. Uh, tickets are ten dollars. And for my time, ten dollars is a hell of a lot of money, so I sure hope it's good. Uh, the repertory also wanted to express their gratitude to the mayor, council and staff uh, for all the contributions of support and good wishes in their success. We're pleased to be part of the weekend's festivities and we look forward to next year. Thank you very much.
I don't know if I, that's a hard act to follow. Thank you, Mark. If I may say so. Let's go on to item three with call to the public. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and discuss, and decision at a later date or responding to criticism. Is there anyone out there would like to speak to the council and call to the public? Please come up and give us your name.
Good evening, guys. Uh, my name's Daniel Brundage. I own Affordable Auto Repair here in town. I've been in, uh, contact with, uh, the code enforcement here with Will. Addressing the fact that, uh, I'm off-site, uh, off, off-site signage is what I'm addressing here. The two new buildings were placed in front. I had a signpost there for seven years. Uh, in the last nine months, I've lost about eighty thousand dollars. No signage. What I'm asking the city to do is to recognize the ones that have been in business here for quite some time. I've been in business, I guess, like since two thousand ten here. Anyway, uh, I've been fighting with the, uh, not really fighting with, but addressing this since April when the sign went down. Uh, I guess what I'm asking is to see if we can reconsider on the off-site signage that the city does not allow now. Um, I had, like I said, I had that sign there for seven years. New buildings went up, my sign went down, now my business is going down. So, uh, a few people in here do know me. The fact of the matter is, is right now it's pushed me out of business. So I'd like the city to consider, reconsider the signage for off-site if they would.
We can't give you an answer tonight, but we'll have an answer in the next council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, wait, you have a question?
Okay.
What was your location again?
It's sixteen twenty South Highway eighty-nine. The property belongs to Danny and Charlene Clark. Uh, Eric Faulkner bought the property up front, put two new buildings in and soon as he took occupancy of that building, my sign came down mysteriously. So anyway, this, this has been a big issue. I don't want to move out of City of Chino. Oh, I don't think O'Reilly's wants me to move out and thirty-five hundred customer base that I have wants me to move out either. But if I don't have a sign, I can't make the money to pay the taxes, pay the, the, everything else that I have to pay, then I guess I'm forced out. But at this point, I'd rather not leave Chino. So if we can figure out something, even if it's a, a, uh, temporary permit or something, I've talked to Alvarez. He's willing to let me put a sign on his post. So it's, it's up to the city now.
Okay, we'll get an answer to you.
Right, thank you.
Town manager, would you, uh, look into that issue? Thank you for coming. Anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Oh, wait till they finish speaking and then we'll, we'll go on. Okay, let's go on to the next item. It's response to the public. Response to the public is an opportunity for the mayor to inform the public about how town officials address matters raised during call to the public as a previous meeting. Response to Mr. Carlos Romano's owner of C R Water Works requesting the town to drop their tier system and replace with a flat fee. As of November twelfth, twenty nineteen, council meeting, a request was made to review charging a flat rate for all fu- fill station customers versus the current tiered rate. Staff has reviewed the fill station accounts and agrees that a flat rate per one, one thousand gallons is more equitable for residential commu- customers having water delivered by commercial water holes. In order to change the current rates, a water rate analysis report has to be completed, published and a public hearing needs to be held. Staff will begin working on this and anticipa- and, ew, yeah, anticipates having it completed, uh, by early spring of twenty twenty. All right. That's the only response to the public that we have. Let's go on to current events summaries and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council and questions may be answered, no action will be taken. First of all, the status reports by the mayor and council regarding current events. The first thing I'd like to say is we have a, an employee that's about to leave us. Vicki is going to retire. Would you stand up Vicki, please, so we can embarrass you? Thank you very much for the time you spent with, we really appreciate it. And I know you're going to be back off in the line, I hope, but we, you, you've, you've done a heck of a job for the town and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're starting our citizens academy again. It will start on January twenty-third. It'd be Thursday evening, about three or four hours. And what it really is, is an opportunity for our citizens to actually take a look at the town and the things that we do. Uh, the, when the town council comes in, you have an opportunity to discuss things with the town council. Uh, then we have staff comes in and it's over a period of time, I think it's seven, eight weeks, eight Thursday evenings, and we have the staff rotate through. Not only do we have that, we have the police dog comes in and does a demonstration. So you can't wear, can't smoke any pot that night if you're going to come into that meeting. But it's about three or four hours and it's eight weeks and we go through the entire town. Also, the first session is a history of the Chino Valley. And it put on by the local, uh, Chino Valley folks, historians, and it is really neat. Uh, if you'd never thought, the things that happened in Chino Valley is really interesting. Then we have service clubs, educational organizations, and we rotate a lot of people through. So by the end of the session, you'll be very familiar with how the town operates, how it run. And we'll try to dispel all those myths that we've been going through all those years. So if you have an opportunity, you got three or four hours, starting in January twenty-third. If you can give it a evening to come in and listen to what we do here, you can, you can contact the, uh, yeah, contact the chamber. I was going to say here too, but I'm, we'll push it to the chamber. You can contact here, you can contact the chamber and you can, uh, enroll for it. It's free, it doesn't cost you a thing. And it's pretty informative. You should always wonder what the town does and how it does it and, uh, come in and spend some time with us. Thank you. Anybody else?
No.
I'd like to say something.
Okay.
A number of months ago, I was in, asked to be chairman over the fiftieth anniversary of this town, which will be next year. Uh, but we decided to go ahead and write a book. We, yesterday, uh, the book committee went ahead and did the final, uh, reading of the book. We went ahead and were worried about having a hundred pages. We now have two hundred and thirty-eight pages to our book. It includes businesses, it includes families that have been here, it includes churches, service clubs, and just about anything that makes up our town. And, uh, we hope to have it to the publisher, probably early January, after which it will be for sale to the community. And I would like to thank personally all those who have contributed, who have gave stories, who have rewritten stories, uh, especially Will Williams, our editor of the book. I saw it yesterday and it is a beautiful thing. It will be, look very nice on your coffee table. And, uh, I hope everybody gets a chance to look at it and buy it if they so like. But I've already got my order in for two copies, so thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, town manager.
Sure. Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, besides thanking Vicki for her service here to the town, I'd also like to call out Alex Lerma, who's been our planner. This will be his last council meeting as he will be leaving in early January. So I want to thank Alex for what he's done, especially over the last several years. We've had quite a turnover in the directorship and gen- and, uh, development services. And Alex has been the constant that we've had over there. So we're really appreciative of that. I can't see him, but I know he's been there somewhere.
Alex, please stand up so we can embarrass you.
Thank you, Alex, for everything that you've done for us. Um, I wanted to mention this Saturday, uh, to piggyback on some of the December to remember things. We were having a pretty big, um, party over at Memory Park over on Three North and, um, One West. We'll have, um, besides jump houses and other things like that in the park, we have vent, um, trees that have been set up by individual businesses. And we have somebody very special coming in at four o'clock on a helicopter that every grandkid or child around here loves to see. And he'll have presents for every child who shows up. So that'll be a fun thing. And you can do both that and go to the, the, um, Repertory Theater, um, all on Saturday. It'll fit into your schedule. Um, I wanted to remind council, we have no other meetings in December. Um, today's study session covered any other study sessions we'd have this month. So our next meeting will be in early January. We'll have council meeting and then a full study session that month as well. Wanted to, um, tell you, today I sat in on the panel for two assistant fire chief vacancies that are upcoming. Um, so we should have some new turnover in our fire department and the district. So those will be coming up in the next several months. Uh, they had some internal candidates who were very good and, uh, I think they, um, recruitment went well. And I wanted to thank you all for a great year and hope, and wish you all a happy holiday. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else? We'll go on to?
One thing.
Yes?
I know she's, our town manager is very busy and, but we need to be there for the lighting of the lights on the fourteenth. You're fine, but that was my project, so I had to remember. And Scott would not let me forget the lighting of the lights.
And the mayor switches on the lights, yes, to turn on the holiday season. I'm so sorry.
At dusk, we'll flip the lights on and turn on all the lights at memory.
Attention to detail.
As we did last year.
My apologies.
Oh, no apology, it's just what we want to do. Yes, Scott?
Thank you.
I've asked the town manager to sing a song, but so far she's refused.
I'm in favor of that.
All right.
I better go on.
Can we get to work now?
No.
Let's go on to item six with the consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Do we have anything that we want to remove? On this side. I need a motion then to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve consent agenda as written, uh, item six, A through E.
Second it?
Our motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Let's go on to item seven, action items. The council may vote to recess the public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one oh three eight three for the purpose of discussion or con- consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public and no action may be taken in the executive session. Let's go to item A under action items. Consideration of possible action to adopt R N S twenty nineteen eight seventy-six to rezone approximately ten acres of real property known as Craftman Court from AR five agriculture residential five acre minimum zoning district to SR zero point one six P A D, single-family residential, seven thousand square foot minimum lot area zoning district with a planned area development overlay. The property is located on the southeast corner of Juniper Drive and North Road One East at seven oh one North Road One East, Chino Valley. Assessor partial number three oh six two four zero one two, Mr. Lerma.
Good evening, mayor, council. Before you have an item by the applicant, I'm Paul Slanian. Um, he's representing the property owner in this, uh, land action. Uh, he, uh, the application is for a rezone request. As I stated before, uh, the applicant is requesting the zone change for the property. The property is, uh, subject property is located on the southeast corner of Road One East and Juniper Drive, uh, address seven zero one North Road One East. As you can see here in the map, we have, uh, designation, uh, land uses surrounding the subject property. To the north of the subject property, we see Colonial Villa subdivision, which as you know, is starting to get developed little by little. Uh, further north, we have Bondi Plants. Northeast, we have Chino Meadows subdivision. Uh, to the east, we have Highlands Ranch subdivision. To the south, we have, uh, one acre, single-family residential lots. Uh, to the west, we have Walker Estate subdivision and as we go in further up, Road Runner Mobile Home Park, USDA Forest Services and Community West, uh, or Country West Manufacturing Home Park. Subject property is ten acres. Um, media, uh, current zoning on the property is agriculture residential five acre minimum. Land use, the, the general plan land use designation is medium density residential, two acres or less. The property right now, there's a, there's a single-family residence and, and accessory structure. The property is accessed through Juniper Drive, as you can see here, there's a access and there's a home right there. Here's a zoning map just indicating what the, the, the zoning classification on the property is and, and the zoning on the surrounding properties. As you see here, we have, uh, mostly, uh, medium density, uh, high-density residential, uh, zoning districts. Uh, to the north, we have multifamily residential slash commercial light, uh, zoning classification. On Colonial Villa subdivision, we have single-family residential point sixteen or seven thousand square foot minimum lot size for Chino Meadows. Um, Highlands Ranch has multifamily residential slash mobile home park, um, zoning. And to the south, we have single-family residential one acre minimum zoning and a mix of agriculture five acre minimum and multifamily residential. To the west, we have single-family residential one acre minimum, two point five acre minimum, uh, agriculture five acre minimum, public land and mobile home park. Here is, uh, the site plan that the applicant has submitted. It just indicates conceptually what the project is going to look like. Um, as stated before, the applicant is requesting a zone change to go from the current zoning district, uh, agriculture residential five acre minimum to the SR zero point sixteen with a P A D overlay. Uh, the P A D overlay will allow the developer to deviate from current development standards set forward by the single-family residential, seven thousand square foot, uh, Seven thousand square foot, uh, lot minimum. So just a little bit, uh, touch base a little bit, some of the details here that are indicated within the site plan. The development will be done with, uh, will be done in two phases. Phase one will create, uh, or will develop twenty lots. And phase two will develop an additional twenty-five lots. Some of the, uh, some of the notes here, um, it's not readable, so I was able to. The text bringing up a little bit bigger. It says the site area is ten, ten acres. Uh, lot, number of lots, proposed forty-five lots. The smallest lot will be four thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. The largest lot will be nine thousand four hundred and nine square feet. Uh, average lot size is gonna be five thousand three hundred and thirty-four square feet. Uh, density on the project is gonna be four point five dwelling units per acre. Keep in mind that with straight zoning, meaning with just the zoning without the P A D overlay. The single family residential, uh, point sixteen allows for six point two units per acre. So he's actually going, uh, lower than what is being proposed by, by the actual zoning. And, uh, he is proposing two point five acres, uh, of open space. That's twenty-five percent of the, of the ten acres will be dedicated to open space. Some of the, the features here, um, that are indicated within this language here. It's just indicating that he's gonna be locating landscaping along Juniper Drive and Road One East. And internally too, within the, the local street that'll be within the property. And he's also gonna be locating sidewalks, Juniper Drive, One East and internally. He's actually proposing for sidewalks on one side of the street internally within a subdivision, but we'll get into, to, to that discussion later on. And, uh, he is proposing two accesses through Juniper Drive, uh, ingress, egress. Here and here. This is where the open space is gonna be, uh, located, and he's also proposing guest parking here on the side. Here's a conceptual, uh, elevation plans, just indicating what this, uh, what, what the project is gonna look like. Uh, these will be site-built homes. Here, uh, is a table just showing the, the requirements for the, or the development standards. For the single family residential, uh, point sixteen acre minimum. So if he wasn't going, if he was proposing straight zoning without the P A D overlay, he will need to abide by these development standards. Just going down the list, minimum lot frontage is, uh, fifty feet. Minimum front yard setbacks, uh, depending on what street he, uh, the, the property is abutting. But typically, for this project, there will be twenty feet, minimum side yard setbacks is gonna be ten feet. Minimum street yard setbacks, depending on what street this side of the property is abutting. But if it's a buddy in Juniper Drive, it will be twenty feet. Minimum rear side setback, twenty feet, ma- maximum building height, twenty-five feet. Maximum lot coverage is fifty feet. The reason I'm bringing this up is because what I'm gonna do is compare it to what they're proposing. Or deviate from, from the development standards. Uh, another, uh, development standard that, that's gonna be coming up later on and, and the, and the upcoming slides is gonna be sidewalks. Uh, we have two sections within our zoning regulations that touch base on sidewalks. Section five point three two, uh, that's the street design standard section of the U, of the UNIFIL Development Orient. Indicates that residential, um, less than one dwelling per acre do not require a sidewalk. Um, but there's another section. We have a landscaping section, section four point, four point two, six point four. Um, indicates that arterial and collector streets, uh, shall provide a six-foot sidewalk. With an eight-foot landscaping buffer. And local streets shall provide a four-foot sidewalk. Um, ADA requires a five-foot sidewalk with a six-foot, um, landscaping buffer. Typically, when we have two sections with the code that con- contradict each other or, or, or give direction and two separate. Go in two separate ways, um, it's a good planning practice to, uh, abide by the one that's more stringent. So in this case, we're requiring them to go with a more stringent development standard, which is the landscaping section of it. So we are requiring them to provide us sidewalks and landscaping on all local streets and all, uh, streets that are abutting the, the project. So here, just again visually, um, we're talking about what currently what the SR, SR point sixteen. Development standards require. So here we're looking at it more visually, uh, within the building envelope and the setbacks and, and the building set, setbacks that, that would need to abide by if they were going with just straight zoning. So for instance, the first visual here will be an interior lot, uh, with like an example, number twenty from forty to, to fourteen. Would be considered an interior lot where, um, the lot is only facing one local street and, and, and no other, either local street or, or arterial street. So typically, the setbacks will be twenty feet from the front, ten on the sides, ten on the rear. For a lot that is, uh, that is abutting, uh, a street on both sides, both on the front and the, and the side. That type of lot will have to meet twenty feet on the front, twenty on the side, that's abutting the street, uh, ten on, on the interior side lot. And, uh, ten on the rear. For a lot that's abutting, a local street on Juniper Drive and an internal, and, and within the internal street in the front. They will have to, the building will need to be set back twenty feet on the front, twenty on, on Juniper Drive. Ten on the interior side and then ten in the rear. And for a lot, for instance, for number twelve, which is in the green, where it's actually abutting the local street in the front. And the main arterial in the rear, it will need a, a clear fifty feet from the rear, from the, from the main arterial street side. Um, twenty feet on the local side of the street, ten on the sides. So again, the reason for the P A D overlay is for the developer is requesting to deviate from certain development standards. And here are the tables that indicate what development standards he wants to deviate from. Again, uh, interior side, side yard setback, uh, current development standards require ten feet. He's requesting five feet. Street side setbacks, current standards, uh, required twenty feet. He's requesting eight feet. Front property line setbacks, he's requesting sixteen feet on the lots that do have a sidewalk. And eleven feet on those lots that do not have a sidewalk on the front of, of the actual lot. On Road One East, um, for the lots that are abutting Road One East to the rear property line. Our development standards require a fifty-foot setback. He's requesting a twenty-foot setback. Um, on those lots that are abutting Juniper Drive on the side of the, of the lot. Development standards require twenty feet. They're requesting ten feet. Some other development standards that they wanna deviate from are, uh, lot size. Development standards, uh, require seven thousand square foot minimum. And he's requesting four hundred and fif- four, four thousand five hundred and sixty square feet minimum. And that's not to say that all lots are gonna meet, are gonna be that dense, that are so, that's only some of the lots. Whi- whi- within that subdivision. Another of the development standards they wanna deviate from are, again sidewalks, the subject of the si- of the sidewalks. Where by development standards, we're requiring them to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And he's only requesting sidewalks on one side of the street, and we'll get into that a little bit further. So again, here's a, a visual table typi- showing the comparison between what our development standards require and what they're proposing here. So here, the first lot would be the lot that has a sidewalk on the front. So that lot would be, uh, setback, building setbacks would be sixteen feet is what they're requesting, five on the side, ten on the rear. For a lot that's abutting the local street that doesn't have a sidewalk, they're proposing eleven feet in the front, five on the sides, ten in the rear. For a lot that's abutting the local street on both sides, for example, again, this lot here that, this is a local street within that subdivision, and this is the local street within that subdivision. They're proposing eleven feet in the front, eight on the, on the street side, five on the internal side, ten on the rear. For a lot that's abutting Juniper Drive and the local street within that subdivision in the front. They're proposing eleven feet in the front, five on this, on the interior side, ten on Juniper Drive, ten on the, under, in the rear. And for the lots that are abutting the main arterial to the rear of the lot on Road One East and in the front, the local street. They're proposing eleven feet in the front, five on the sides, twenty in the rear. Here is, uh, again the visual, here again is a vi- visual comparison of what our development standards are requiring and what they're proposing. Here it indicates with the brown or the, oh, sorry, the orange would represent the sidewalks. For our development standards, they would need to have the sidewalk going along Road One East, Juniper Drive. And internally within that subdivision, coming back out to Juniper Drive and stopping here. And for landscaping requirements, they will have to, uh, locate landscaping along Road One East. Along Juniper Drive internally within all the, the front of the lots within that subdivision. And going back out to Juner- to Juniper Drive and along perpetuity place. So, um, what they're proposing is leaving the landscaping the same. They're gonna be locating landscaping along Road One East, Juniper Drive and internally within all the, the front of all the lots. But what changes is the, is the, is the sidewalks. What they're proposing is to have the sidewalk along Road One East. Within the, mm, within, uh, the local street internally, the subdivision, stopping here. And then having it on the other side of the street here. Typically, what this is, is having the sidewalk only on one side of the street, internally within that subdivision. But externally, within Juniper Drive and Road One East, they will be providing the sidewalk.
Alex, can I ask a question since we're right there at that?
This slide right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, he, he's offering to dedicate an additional twenty-five feet, um, on the Road One East side.
That's correct.
Within that dedicated area, we, we ask for that dedication for future growth, for possibly a future traffic lane, correct?
For running out of street, that's correct.
The, uh, so we're gonna be putting landscaping and sidewalk within where that potential traffic lane could be.
No.
No?
No. So he's already taken into account what he will be, the future dedication.
Is that not within the, the dedicated amount? It looks like your line is right on top of where it says de- right-of-way dedication.
Right, but keep in mind that this is still conceptual. They still need to go through the preliminary plot, final plot. Within those plans that you'll see, it'll be more specific.
Okay, cause I, I'm also thinking could, when, if the event should happen that we then widen that road and actually use that for a lane. We would then need to move the sidewalk and the landscaping back, which then affects the setback from your previous slide as well. I'm getting a no.
Well, you want? Mayor and Council, Frank Marbury, Public Works Director, Town Engineer. Just wanna maybe clarify on One East, what the improvements will look like. Um, per our code for an arterial street, now this is total width, they're only on half the width. So total width, your code calls for a hundred foot right-of-way, which also includes a forty-two foot roadway. With sidewalks within that hundred foot right-of-way. So at half width and that fifty feet, the sidewalk would be inside, but the roadway would be twenty-one feet from center line to curb gutter and then sidewalks and landscaping or areas outside of that. So that's how you get to the fifty feet is the twenty-one plus the sidewalks and things. So there's room for sidewalks and you want sidewalks within the right-of-way, not on public, not on private land. So that's what that shows is with that twenty-one foot half width roadway. And then the sidewalks, does that make more sense?
Okay, so then the twenty-five foot and the half, you could fit your two lanes there?
Yeah, there's, if, uh, if I remember correctly, there is twenty-five foot existing and they're dedicating additional twenty-five feet. For the fifty-foot half width of the hundred foot right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
So typically, the way, uh, P, a P A D overlay works is if the developer is asking for, to deviate from development standards. Town asks for something in return, right? So this is what we're gonna be talking about right now. So, and in order to deviate from development standards, the, the applicant is proposing the following, um, uh, features to offset the deviation. He's proposing again, twenty-five feet of land being set aside for open space. And keep in mind that this isn't something that's required within the code. So for instance, landscaping, uh, along street frontage is already required by the code. So he can't use that to offset, to deviate from development standards. Uh, these, these are features or items that are required, that he's not required to provide. So again, twenty-five, twenty-five percent of the, of the ten acres or, or two point five acres are dedicated to open space. That's not, that's not including the landscaping that he's also providing. Uh, off-street trails, off-street trails, uh, gazebo pavilion for picnic area. Guest off-street parking and fencing along Juniper Drive, Road One East and South property, and the South property line. Uh, the applicant notified property owners within three hundred feet of the, uh, within the three hundred foot radius of the subject property. That amounts into twenty letters being sent out to adjacent property owners. The neighborhood meeting was held here at Town Hall on, on October twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. At that meeting, there were two residents. The two residents that attended the meeting had several issues, um, that they brought up. One of them had to do with, uh, water depletion. They, she stated that forty-five lots would amount to her water levels within her property being depleted. The applicant indicated that the, the development would be connected to town water and sewer, to both utilities. So this project will be provided, you, um, water and sewer by the town. Um, she also had issues about the landscaping that the developer was providing, that it would be using a lot of water. The developer assured her that the landscaping that he would be locating on site would be of low water usage. And, uh, they also had issues about height restrictions. Um, she, as a developer, if there would be, uh, two-story units within the development. He indicated that there would be. He didn't know, um, how many exactly would be two-story houses. But he assured her that none of them would be within the South property line, meaning here. So he, uh, the developer stated that he would put a deed restriction along lot, from lot forty to lot fourteen. He would, uh, put a re- deed restriction on these lots to be, uh, only one story high. Um, he also assured her that he would be locating a wooden fence along the South property line. Item we went before, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission on November fifth, and they heard the item as well. Um, one of the commissioners did have a question about the, the sidewalk. And was asking why exactly was he only proposing sidewalks on one side of the street? The developer. The applicant stated that the area of the sidewalks help provide enough setback depth into the garage area. Further stating that the sidewalks on both sides would require the homes to be set back further. There's also a note within the development plan that says five-foot sidewalks are proposed on one side of the street only to allow for deeper driveways and better off-street. And better off-street parking, this will also allow for street parking adjacent to those lots that do not have a sidewalk. That's the reason for them requesting sidewalks on one side of the street. Um. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval for this item, the vote was one to six. The commissioner who uh, voted nay indicated that. That the project should conform with straight zoning, but as indicated before, he's actually going lower density than, than what's. Uh, provided within the straight zoning. Based on uh, staff's research uh, of this project and uh, taking into account the general plan. Um, the project is right outside what we identified within the general plan as a main community core. Uh, core district, there's a section within uh, the general plan. Uh, that discusses uh, land use elements and now we'll read it as, as followed, it says, land use elements. The land use element section of the general class discussed prevailing land use patterns in Chino Valley reflecting large residential lots. Spreading out long distance from each other and from shopping, shopping school, parks, services and other uses. Uh, this requires residents to drive long distances and does not promote a walkable community. As stated before, uh, the, the development is right outside directly east of the main community core, the main community core promotes. Higher densities, walkability, um, where activity is done in a more dense setting, so that will a- actually. Support the type of uh, density that the applicant is proposing. Uh, I wanna discuss uh, this following slide that. Um, if the, if the developer was looking for an area to put this type of development, he basically picked the perfect spot. Because the density that's existing on s- uh, and and the, and in this surrounding area i- is already supporting it, as we can see here. From the residential developments around it, we have a colonial villas to the north that has a. Providing three-point-nine units per acre, we have Country West manufactured home. Uh, actually has six mobile homes or six units per acre, we have Road Runner Mobile Home Park. Now, they're providing three-point-five uh, units or mobile homes per acre, we have Chino Meadows. A unit two to the west of the, of the subject property, uh, they're providing five-point-four units per acre. Uh, Highlands Ranch is providing three-point-two units per acre. The development or the subject property is providing, or they're requesting four-point-five units per acre, so the density is already there. Um, what makes this project different from all the other subdivisions that are around that area is basically the aesthetics. Um, he's providing uh, trails, he's providing sidewalks that are, uh, account for the connectivity to. Um, surrounding projects, uh, connectivity to the community core, he's providing landscaping for aesthetics as well, and he's providing. A big amount of, of, of property for open space and green spaces, so. A staff and planning zoning recommend for, a recommendation of approval to Town Council to adopt ordinance. Two zero nine, two zero one nine dash eight seven six, rezoning approximately ten acres. Of real property from the agriculture residential five-acre minimum zoning district to the single-family residential. Point sixteen PAD, uh, planned area development overlay zoning district with the following conditions. Condition number one. The projects are substant- so substantially conform to the site plan, landscaping plan, conceptual building elevation and other exhibits provided. By the applicant as modified by staff recommendation conditions. Uh, number two, developers should provide a six-foot fence installed at the property line of each lot. Funding One East and Juniper Drive, in addition, a four-foot wooden fence, a six-foot wooden fence. Shall be installed along the South Property Line. Number three, the developer should provide proof of assured water supply from the state of Arizona, condition number four. The ta- the Tana Chino Valley has an existing twelve-inch water line. In Juniper Drive, right-of-way along the property frontage, the property will be required to connect. Additionally, the installation of a fire hydrant at a minimum of five hundred feet space will be required. Further, the water main shall be extended along the property entire frontage on Road One East per town code fifty-one point zero six zero. Uh, stipulation number five, the developer will be required to construct the new eight-foot. Or eight-inch sewer line along the property entire uh, front, frontage per town code fifty-one point zero six zero. In lieu of construction of a eight-inch sewer line along the perimeter of the entire frontage of the property. For town code fifty-one point zero six zero and eight-inch sewer line that. Is extended through the development and terminates within the right-of-way at Road One East and southwest corner of the val-. Of the development and accept, is exa- is acceptable. Condition number six, Tana Chino Valley area drainage master study shows possible flooding potential on one. On the east side of the property, the building design will need to take. This into account in addition, the additional right-of-way or drainage easement may be required, condition number seven. All drainage ways that convey fifty cubic feet per second or more during the one-hundred-year flood event shall be. Considered a regulatory flood and shall be dedicated to the public with provisions of maintenance access ramps. Condition number eight, a drainage study that addresses the hydrology and hydrolicky components related to the onsite. And the offside drainage shall be developed and prepared by the. Registered Arizona Professional Engineer, the drainage studies shall be approved before the street improvement plan and final plan are approved. If the subdivision will be developed in phases, a master drainage plan will be required. Stipulation number nine, the developer should dedicate an additional right-of-way of fifty feet east. Of the road, center line on Road One East and twenty-five feet west of center line on Pepper Tree Drive. Additional right-of-way or drainage easements may be required on Juniper Drive, uh, pending engineering study results. Uh, stipulation number ten, the developer shall improve the east half of Road One East and the south half of Juniper Drive along the. Project limits per town street design standards, this includes but is not limited to a new road section. Pavement edge treatment sidewalks and utility locations as necessary due to the pending drainage project improvements on Pepper Tree. Are not recommended, cash or other amenity in lieu of improvements is recommended. Condition number eleven, a traffic impact statement for the development will be required. Condition number twelve, the city of Prescott has an aerial e- an aerial easement for power lines. This may limit development in the vicinity of this easement. And the last condition, condition number thirteen, a one-inch. Oh, sorry, one-foot non-vehicular access easement will be required along Road One East and Juniper Drive. Just to keep in mind also for council that this is the first step of the subdivision process. First is the zoning, you will see this item back for preliminary plot and again for final plot. Where all these conditions again will be discussed. The applicant is here, if uh, council or the mayor have any questions for him or for any of the staff.
Let's go to this side, questions on this side?
No, looks pretty thorough to me.
Anyone? Questions on this side?
I have one. On your uh, when you look at the fencing, you have fencing on three sides. But it's only stipulated, it's a wooden fence on the.
On the south side, yeah, so it, so it, finish your question and then I can answer.
So what are the fences, what's required on the other two sides?
Per our development standards, we're, our development standards don't require fencing, again, this is something that he's providing to deviate from development standards, he's. Providing additional uh, buffering, he, uh, it has been determined that to the south, it, it will be a wooden fence. On uh, One East and uh, and on Juniper Drive, it still hasn't been determined. Uh, he did state during PNZ that it will not be a chain link fence, but it will be some type of fencing, the material still hasn't been decided.
Okay, so once the wooden fence is built. Along. Yeah, on the so- on the south side.
Yeah.
Who's, who's, who's fence does that become, does that become the property owner that that fence is on, or does it?
So.
And, and the reason I ask this is that we all know living in Arizona that wood does not last forever.
Right, so uh, w- w- within the, the, the staff report, it was indicated, I, I didn't mention it during the presentation, but. The HOA will be taking care of the, the landscaping, um, and, and the fencing as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's have a.
Oh, one second, could the applicant just say wave so I can put a face to it? Hi, thank you.
I make a recommendation, we adopt uh, ordinance. Two one nine dash eight seven six to rezonate approximately ten acres of real property from ARS agricultural residential five-acre minimum zoning. District to SR zero point one six PAD, single-family residential seven thousand square foot minimum lot area. Zoning district with a planned area develop overlay zoning district with the conditions recommended by staff.
I have a motion, do I have a second, I have a motion and second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
Nay, we have one nay, motion carries.
Joyce Kelly.
Okay, let's, thank you very much folks, let's go on to item eight, executive session. Council may vote to recess the regular meeting and hold an executive session, which will not be opened to the public for the following purposes. The council may hold an executive session pursuant to Arizona RE Rev Stat. Thirty-eight four thirty-one oh three eight more for discussion or consultation with the town attorney. In order to consider its position and instruct the town attorney regarding negotiations. Related to a potential economic development agreement, Arizona revised statute thirty-eight four thirty-one oh three eight three and four. For discussion or consultation and legal advice with the town attorney in order to consider its position. And instruct the town attorney regarding the existing Chino Meadows development agreement. I need a motion to go on to executive.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn to sec- executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Boy, what a. Oh, thank you. You're, you're my hero. Come on, Joyce, hurry up, we wanna go home.
Talking about the copy machine.
Oh, okay. You ready, Joyce?
Ready.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
See you in January.